June, school board meeting. Board, you guys have had the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do we have any questions, comments, or changes to the agenda slated for tonight?
Mr. President, the agenda would stand as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Dotson for the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Likewise, we've had the minutes from the previous meeting. Any comments or concerns about the previous minutes?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Luttrell and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the minutes from the previous board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we've reserved the next few minutes for patron comments. If anybody has any comments, concerns, or questions to the board, just come forward, state your name, what your comment or question is. Just understand, we can't take action on it tonight, but we'd love to hear your comments. Okay, Dr. Rollins?
It's a real privilege for me, Board, to welcome Mr. Thomas Gray, our representative, our student rep this afternoon, and he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thomas, we're glad to have you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thomas, we're very glad to have you here this evening. Board, let me give you this introduction, and then we will look forward to hearing Thomas's comments. He is a senior at Springdale High School. His parents are Michael and Brooke Gray, and they're here with us this evening. Thomas is an international baccalaureate candidate. His teacher, Ms. Turley, is here with him as well this evening. Thomas is also very involved in our band. He's a field commander for the band. He's also a member of Unity. Thomas, you have distinguished yourself in so many areas. We're very, very proud of you. I know the board would welcome any comments you'd like to share this evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. Again, my name is Thomas Gray. I was invited by Mr. Jinks and Ms. Turley to speak to you tonight about my experiences at Springdale High School. I'm a senior of the international baccalaureate program, and I want to personally thank the Board for supporting the program. It's really spectacular. It does so much to ready its students for their post-high school careers. Our coordinator, Ms. Turley, is very encouraging and keeps us excited about our college choices. I'm currently working on my IB extended essay, which is exploring how Ernest Hemingway portrays women in his novel For Whom the Bell Is Told. The college, the extended essay really helps you to prepare how to write a true college research paper. I'm also working on my CAS project at the moment. I have already gone to visit two IB colleges, the University of Tulsa and Missouri State last Friday. I'm interested in majoring in secondary, secondary music education. I'm grateful that Ms. Turley is here with her vision and with her leadership. Every day at SHS, I look forward to my fine arts classes most of all. In band, I play saxophone under the direction of Julie Stevens and Sarah Miller. I have been honored to make all region band. I play in the jazz band, and I will serve my second term as the Springdale High School Field Commander. Last year, we were able to show off our new uniforms, and as well, the drum majors at both major marching competitions won the Outstanding Field Commander Award. We look forward to continuing our excellence this year. I also love singing in the choir programs under the direction of Rhonda Holly and Millie Peters. I sing in a cappella, and I am returning to my third session with the Unity Choir. I've been selected to both all-region and all-estic choirs my sophomore and junior year. I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at this year's Renaissance Feast. I'm glad to choose Springdale High School, along with Monitor Elementary, Jo Kelly Middle School, George Junior High School, because these schools have given me abundant opportunities to lead, serve, succeed, and to grow. Thank you for letting me speak to you today.
Questions? Comments?
I'm curious. So, you indicated the two of the schools you had talked to so far were Missouri State and Tulsa, and you called them IB colleges. What distinguishes a college that makes it an IB college? Is it the amount of credit they give you for classwork that's done? Explain that.
Some colleges are more IB diploma-friendly.
Okay.
So, some of the classes that I'm taking are not true AP classes, but some colleges are very prone to accept IB students. And Tulsa University and Missouri State are two schools that are very accepting of their IB students.
So, if you go through and get the IB diploma and certificate, are you able to, how many hours of credit might you receive going into college? Do you go into college as a sophomore, or does it just depend?
I can get out a lot of my general education classes.
Okay.
For example, because I'm taking, let's see, I'm taking HL, the higher level, Hile, goodness, Higher Level English course with the IB program.
Okay.
I will be able to skip my first year of English at the University of Tulsa and the University of South Missouri, so.
Okay. Gotcha.
Are you leaning one way or the other?
I really liked South Missouri. It was about the same size as the U of A, fairly close to home. Yes, sir.
Okay. Besides Springdale High School music, what do you like to play? Or do you play with any, do you gig on the saxophone?
I like to play, when I'm off duty, I'll sing on my church choir, and also pick up a little bit of piano and guitar and ukulele.
We hope you come back and have a great senior year, and then get a secondary education and come back here and help Springdale.
Yes, ma'am. I'd be honored to.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Very good.
Board, it's a pleasure for me to introduce our new board member this evening. Ladies and gentlemen in the audience, members of our board, this is Mr. Nick Emerson. We're very glad to have him here for his first board meeting. Nick, welcome. Now you get to make a speech, all those things.
And as customary, you have to speak.
I have to speak? Okay. Well, real quick, my wife and three little ones are here. Y'all just stand up real quick. I won't make you come up front, Carter. He was worried about that. My wife, Rachel, she's a teacher at Shaw. Carter's gonna be a second grader at Shaw. Cannon will be second year pre-K at Shaw, and then Claire Kaye is two, so a couple more years, she'll be at Shaw. We'll have all three of them out there. But I'll be brief. I'm very, very honored to be on this board. Grew up in Springdale, went to Springdale Schools my entire education, and have a mother that's been at Tyson for over 25 years. So, Springdale Schools means a lot to me, and just being able to be a part of this district is second to that career right there is probably one of my greatest accomplishments and one of the things that I'm most honored and proud of so far in my life. So, it means a lot. I'm gonna take it very seriously, take it day by day, so be patient. Not too tough of questions for a little bit, if you don't mind, but I'm excited, very excited to just be a part of this team and try to make Springdale as good as it possibly can be, and that's what I'm here to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. President, at the first meeting following the school election, we established board leadership for the coming year, and if we might do that at this point, I would appreciate that.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to have Mr. Owen B. serve as president for a second year, have Mrs. Cook serve as vice president for a second year, and have Ms. McFetrich, even though she's not here, she is going to serve as secretary for a second year, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson and a second by Mr. Dotson for the school board officers for the 2018-19 school year. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Congratulations, Board.
We will serve appropriately.
Thank you very much. Good job. Wendy, if you would, please come to the microphone. I expect everyone in the audience wants to know about these young people dressed in their red tonight.
We have a sea of red.
Odyssey of the mind is a major initiative in our school district. Please tell us what's been happening over the last few weeks.
First of all, thank you for inviting us here tonight to recognize these outstanding students. In front of you, you see a sea of red, future engineers, problem solvers, entertainers. You can only, you can't even imagine until you see them in action. We had 15 teams in Springdale Schools this year from, I believe, eight schools throughout the district. They did extremely well during regional competition and state competition. 10 of those teams were competitive, five of those teams were primary teams, first and second graders, so future Omer's. We already have a plan set for next year. We have a team for sure from School of Innovation. We have two teams, hopefully, from Turnbull, and we may have one from Sonora Elementary, maybe. So, we're trying to expand the program because it's a wonderful program for kids to just show their talents in amazing ways. We have three teams that represented Springdale at the world finals held at the University of Iowa. We have, let's see, Bernice Young Elementary, Problem One, was called Triathlon Travels. They are Division One since they're elementary. They placed first place at regionals, second at state, and 29th in the world competition. And the team members are, if you would please stand, Kara Schutz, Knox Nally, Will Storms, Ben Cooper, Luke Greep, Carissa Vaughn, and Lauren Williams. Their coaches were Mr. Mike Schutz, Renee Greep, and Mr. Kevin Nally. Another Problem One team was from Hellstrom Middle School. They placed first at both regional and state and came in 23rd in the world in Division Two. Their names are Kate Gilder, Lauren Sim, Greer McAllister, Camden Cleveland, Scott Porter, Hudson Parsley, and Luke Leitner. And their coaches were Donna Garlington and Jill Sim. Both of these teams created, or participated in, or competed in the Triathlon Travels where they had to build an actual vehicle that they, that could hold two riders, and they had to find all kinds of mechanisms and throw them together in all kinds of ways that I don't even understand. It's amazing. And it was called Triathlon Travels because it was based on sort of like an Olympic sport. They had to do curling and jousting, and it was, it was really, really interesting to see the engineering behind the entire event. And not only did they do that, they had to do props and costumes and create skits and sing songs, and just amazing. Let's see. Okay, and then our third team tonight is from Problem Two, emojis, speak for yourself. This is the technical problem. They're also Division One. They placed both first place in both regional and state and 11th at world finals. And I also want to brag on them on their spontaneous part. Spontaneous is just that, you walk into a room as a team and you're given a problem. It could be hands-on or verbal or a hybrid, and they scored, they were fifth in world in the spontaneous category. It was amazing. So, that just shows their teamwork and trying to throw together at the last second. You have no idea what's gonna be thrown at you. So, the team members are Brynlee Nix, Rowan Mateo, Caleb Foster, Nico Corinder, Sam Myers, Paisley Sprouse, and Reed McAllister. And they were, they were coached by Donna and Chris Garlington. We just want to thank you again for supporting this program. Every year, you guys help us send coaches to attend world finals, and we just appreciate your support, the gifted program. Although not all the kids are, I guess, labeled gifted and talented, they show their gifts and talented, talents through this program, and they pay our national registration every year. So, we are very, very appreciative to all of you. Thank you.
So, there's really no way that I can recognize every teacher physically looked, but I know Kevin Nally's not a teacher, so I think what's really important here is that you've got parents that are coaches.
Yes, we have a ton of parent support and volunteers that come.
That goes into our mantra of, you know, having great partners, not only business leaders, but also parents. So, we want to appreciate the parents.
Yes, definitely. So, parents, would you please stand up?
Parents, if you will, please stand. Let us recognize you. Great job.
They are very generous with their children. They allow us to work with them two or three days a week after school and even on weekends for hours and hours and hours. And these kiddos have been working since September to produce these amazing feats, so we're super proud of them. So, thank you very much.
Great job. Great job, all of you.
Mr. Stellic, would you please come forward? Mr. Wayne Stellic is our athletic director, as many of you know, and he's got a great proposal for us this evening.
Board members, Dr. Rollins, Cynthia, sports fans in Springdale. If you look, you watch TV, you get around the business world, you see how companies change logos occasionally. Pepsi-Cola changes, Coca-Cola, GM, CBS, they all change logos. For the last five and a half years or so, we have used what we call the banner logo that we've used and was created by some of our students. And so, under that banner, we've won state championships, we've won conference championships, we've connected lots of kids, and probably generated millions of dollars in scholarships for some of our student athletes. Well, tonight, we want to unveil, or you'll unveil, or open up, a golf shirt that has our new logo, which we call the Shield. The Shield has been, if you look at Google or Wikipedia, one of those, you look up a shield, it'll say strength, it'll say power, it'll say protection, it'll say commitment, might say connection. Well, in some respects, that kind of represents Springdale Athletics, all those things right there. So, what it really says here is that there are several schools out there that have Bulldogs. There are several schools that have Wildcats, and every day, there's more and more schools of innovation. But really, there's only one Super S, there's only one HB, and there's only one Phoenix. And so, that's how we came up with the Shield. This has been designed by members of my team in my office. We had help from Bailey Jones at the Springdale East Class, we had Lyndon Chanel from the Harbor East Class, we had Trent Jones, Seth Biaozo. Members of his team would sit back in their, in their studio once in a while and work on their computer or get a napkin out, like Dr. Rollins and I would do, get a napkin and a pencil, we start sketching stuff out. So, that's where this came from. We've had several, we've had board members look at this in the past, we've had coaches, administrators, and so tonight, we unveil the Shield as our new logo. And so, when we have things on Facebook, on Twitter, on staff shirts, it will be the Shield. And we hope that we'll create more memories, more scholarships, and more opportunities because of the Shield. Thank you and enjoy.
Great job.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Good evening, Dr. Rollins, members of the board, and welcome, Mr. Emerson. We have two items on the, for secondary. The first item is we're talking about the Bilinguality Award or the Bilinguality Seal. And just to kind of preface what we're talking about, when we talk about somebody being bilingual, we know that they can communicate in more than one language. But when we talk about being biliterate, it means that they're able to communicate in the form of writing, listening, reading, and speaking. And so, if I could have Ms. Rainey come forward, Ms. Rainey is one of our AP teachers and one of our foreign language teachers at Harbor High School. Ms. Novotny was not able to be here tonight, but she's a big advocate at Springdale High School, and she's gonna share some exciting news.
Thank you for having us. I'm gonna start it with a hard question for the newbie, Mr. Emerson. Who was your favorite Spanish teacher when you were at Springdale High?
You.
Okay, thanks. You passed. Thanks for having us. I do feel strange here without Ms. Novotny, my twin. We're always here at the same time, but she's reading AP literature exams right now, so she couldn't be here. The Arkansas Seal of Bilinguality is awarded each fall and spring to students in grades nine through 12 and is sponsored by the Arkansas Foreign Language Teachers Association, AFLTA, and the Arkansas Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages, ARC-TESAL. Thirty states currently offer an official seal of bilinguality. Candidates for the bilinguality demonstrate proficiency in English through their ASPIRE, ACT, AP English, SAT, stamp, or ALPA scores, and also a world language through AP Spanish or the stamp in French, German, Chinese, or English. On June 14th, the ADE will vote on a resolution to formally endorse the seal. Over 200 students in Arkansas earned the Seal of Bilinguality this year. 103 were from Springdale Public Schools. This is the most from any school district in the state. The press release from the, I think that Dr. Smith shared with you is from the spring round only, so those are the numbers that you have just from the spring. We also, Springdale High and Harbor both had students in the fall. With us tonight are several students from Springdale High, Angel Fonseca, he's a junior, senior, sorry, they're, they're on to the next year, and Albreel Guerra, who just graduated from Harbor High School, Fatima Tretto, who just graduated, Dalia Senobio, Amy Franco Bonilla, and Jasmine Alorsa, they were all seniors. And then from Central Junior High School, just finishing ninth grade, Jack Snally earned two seals of bilinguality, Spanish and German. And if you have any students for any of these amazing students, they're, they're available.
I've already asked one to tutor mine. And me, for that matter.
Right.
So, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
It is.
Dr. Rollins shared with me this morning that this is a huge accomplishment, not only for these individuals here, but to have 103 out of, it's a big deal.
It is. It is.
I think I've just, my comment would be not necessarily a question, but just as an employer and owner of a small business, is how valuable each of you have become because of this bilinguality or bilingual. I mean, you have certainly increased your earning potential. I know that life's not all about money, but it's certainly an important part of it, and I congratulate you on doing that, and we need you as employers in Springdale, so well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Beautiful job.
And those ladies, I'll tell you, they deserve so much credit. They've been working with the University of Arkansas, they've been working with ADE. They're the force behind the need, and so they're really making things happen. The second item on the secondary agenda is I'm actually seeking board approval for the district's Community Service Learning Plan, which can be found on pages 21 through 24. And at your seat, I placed an item that looks something like this with a blue strip across, so I could kind of explain what we're doing. This right here, if you look at the backside, is related to ESSA. On the backside is our, the portions of the ESSA accountability, and then if you flip it over and you go about halfway down, you'll see something called Community Service Learning Credits Earned. And that is what we're seeking approval on tonight. If you will go over a box, this is for any school that has 12th grade enrollment, so we're looking at the three secondary schools that have 12th grade, Springdale High School, Harbor High School, and also the School of Innovation. And so, what we're needing to do tonight is, if you'll notice to the right, there is a course code that is tied to this particular service. And so, ADE has just put out a memo that in order to offer this particular course code that we needed to seek not only local board approval, but we also had to seek state board approval. I brought in a team of administrators, teachers, to come together to create this plan. We've already submitted it to ADE and we're waiting for their approval, and right now, I'm seeking your approval. If you'll notice on pages 21 through 24, the service learning plan consists of a couple different components. One, it had to have a preparation component, it had to have an action component, and it had to have a reflection component. And it was connecting the service to the learning experience based on preparation and reflection. And it wasn't just for students to go out and do community service, it was to really more or less come into a culminating effort on how they can support the community. So, you'll see outlined in this plan how the district would like to proceed. It states that the preparation that will take place and it will be assigned through various ways, we are doing a lot of these things right now in our buildings. It's a way to give students credit. So, if the students continue to do, to do these items, they will do 75 hours, a minimum of 75 hours of this type of service. Once it is complete and documented, they will get a full credit, and that is one of the 22 credits required by the state. Yes, ma'am? So, it's a whole class? It is a full credit, and they are not taking it as a class. So, they can do it independently. They will have four years in which to earn the 75 credits. So, they can start in ninth grade, and as long as they're documenting and continuing on, they can earn the 75 hours. And once they've reached the 75 hours and have the documentation, then it'll be turned in and put on their transcript, and it will be for a full credit. And so, as you go through, you'll see the action that will want the students, it will be overseen by a teacher in the building, and then they'll have a component to reflect on it. We're doing a lot of things right now through a lot of different ways that students are not receiving credit, so this is a way to reach out and get some of those students' credits. We've already, we've, we've already had students earn these types of credits. This is a way of expanding it. If you'll notice as you turn through the plan, there are a list of organizations that will be potential partners. This 11-page packet, which I, I know I didn't run a packet, but this is from the State Department. It already identifies people that we can partner with, but they said if there's some that are not on this list, to include some additional ones, and there is a form that they would fill out to partner with the district to help support the 75 hours. So, it's basically helping students that are already doing it, that it's not an additional requirement for all students? Correct. That's where I was. Correct. There is 22 required state graduation requirements. This can add, this can be one of those, it is not a requirement at all. This is just to give credit for, for students. For what they're already doing. I mean, what's another?
So, what, so they start in ninth grade and they get an event supervisor and an educator signature, and they go to a high school, they're just gonna carry, carry that with them?
So, the way ESSA works is in that second column on the blue sheet, it will tell you which grade band, so let me give you an example. I know Dr. Greep, while he was at Central, put together an honors plan, and one of the ways the students were going to show some of the stuff they were doing in the community was to actually get 75 hours. So, while they would have earned that particular course code on their transcript, it wouldn't have actually given a score to them, it would have given it to Harbor, because they pulled a score as a 12th grade, and if they have that course code identified, then they're a point. If they don't, they don't earn a point. So, if 600 students out of 600 have that course code on their transcript at graduation, then that's a full point. I mean, or what I'm curious is, are they reaching out to their counselor in wanting to do this? Are they reaching out to a certain teacher in wanting, their advisor? Who do they, how do they, I mean, what's the line of command, I guess, to say? If my ninth grader wants to start doing this, how do they go about it? So, we tried to leave the little open for a number of reasons, because most schools are nine through 12 configurations, we're not. So, it's gonna look a little different at a ninth grade level than they are at the high school. The high schools normally have academies, or have counselors, or have advisors. At the junior high level, we're looking at it going through advisors. At the junior high level, we're looking at it going through advisors. But that's, we've left it a little open, because you might have an advisor in the, let's say, the medical academy, but that might not be the person overseeing the credit. So we need to make sure that we have enough openness to what we're proposing, that we can, we can be lenient on how that's documented.
Can you only get one credit, or if you do 150 hours, can you get two credits?
Yeah. Normally, when a course code is used, it is used for one credit. There's very few, few times where it can be used over, and band is one of them, but for the most part, of course, credit is for either a half or one credit.
Marshall, I love to, you've heard me so many times use this kind of slogan, if you will. Our schools are growing in prominence at the local, state, and national level, and our students are leading the way. This school service venue is a great way, can you imagine for just a moment the influence a young man like Thomas would have, as he goes out into the community, represents himself, his family, our school district, and helps build that understanding of prominence across our community? This, this is a model that we've been endorsing and trying to, in effect, give life to for a number of years, and I'm really glad that the state is recognizing this and making this opportunity to earn credit.
And Ms. Turley was excited when we were talking about all the great things that IB students do, but they're limited on the credits they have, and for an IB student trying to meet the rigors of the IB and also state requirements, sometimes it can be difficult, and so this is a way to also support their efforts. But yeah, this is very exciting. And we will also try to put in additional support systems in the schools, so that we can take students who might not think about doing this independently, and try to guide them in this direction, if this is something that we know can definitely benefit them. So our goal is to try to get as many students as possible to earn any of these credits.
So, I have two questions. One of them is, so let's say you have a student that doesn't qualify, doesn't get this credit, they can still graduate, it sounds like, without this credit.
Correct.
But could, does that school or the district suffer in an ESSA grading or percentage that we see here? They, that's one point, if there's 100 points in the pie, that's one point that...
So this is one and one-ninth points of that, 1.11, or one and one-ninth points? You, you asked me for a math question here, so, okay, so it's one and one-ninth points of the overall 100 points. The way that, if you think about it in terms of one, if, if 200 out of 400, then they will get a .5 points for it. So every student is that fraction of the overall population of the senior class.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that make sense?
We can touch on that in the last work session.
Yes, yes, yes. So if you look at current numbers, and I'm estimating here, but Harbor High School might have 200 students that, that qualify now. We've had to put different strategies in place because of this new requirement, but let's say 200 students out of the 600, that means they would have earned one-third of that one and one-ninth point, yes.
Okay, all right, understood. All right, so the other question is maybe, what is a noble cause that might not qualify for something like this? I mean, it, I'm trying to figure out, how broad is this? So if I go work at a soup kitchen through Salvation Army, that feels like that might qualify for this, but maybe if I umpire a T-ball game, I, I...
Yes, and the ultimate goal is to assess the community, figure out where the community is, figure out a need in the community, and support that need. And so it can, it can be, the reflective piece is big on this, and you, on the last page, it's kind of how they're going to document it, but reflecting on how they supported what is happening in their community by doing this. And can they expand it, and can they broaden it? What are some things they can do? Can they get more students involved in it? So it's really not just necessarily doing the service, but it's really trying to expand how that service is benefiting the bigger picture. And we will try to help support students, and keep in mind, if the student turns in no documentation, you would never even know it. The only way there's, when the documentation is turned in, that's the first time it will show on the transcript. So it's not a graduation requirement. It does support the schools with ESSA, and we will do everything we can to support students in that direction and, and start giving guidance. I will say that I do have our plan in right now at ADE, so it could be that ADE comes back with some suggestions on how to improve our plan, in which case then we'll move forward, bringing back the committee and making those adjustments.
And you need board approval?
I do need board approval, yes, please.
I make a motion that we approve the district's plan for community service learning.
I have a motion by Mrs. Cook, and a second by Mr. Dotson, to approve the community service learning plan for the district. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Dr. Cleveland, if you would, I know we have new members of our administrative team in the audience this evening, and look forward to your introductions.
We've had some, some neat growth over time. Dr. Rollins and I have talked about it over and over, and, you know, sometimes you have to have some change, to have some growth, right? We're going through that. In fact, of our eight secondary schools, we've had changes in each school, but two, in every school but two, and I've just now thought about that. I want to introduce some people that are going to lead our new secondary schools, but first I'd like for a couple of folks to stand up. One is Dr. Joe Rollins, he's in the room. Dr. Joe, as Dr. Rollins has already supported and written you a note about Joe is going to be the Director of Support Services, Business Community Partnerships, and Innovative Education. Very proud of the work he's done and the work that he's already started to do, to help support all of our work in facilities and with business partnerships, that's a continuation of something that he's already begun over time while he's been at SOI, and also the innovative education piece that he's also carried for the last several years. So thank you, Joe, we look forward to Joe starting that new role July 1. However, he has gotten a jumpstart since he's already in the district. I'd also like to introduce Dr. Danny Brackett, he's in the room. Dr. Danny Brackett was the principal at Harbor, as you know, for 13 years, now he's taken the role of Coordinator of Student Support. And we are developing that new, new position. In fact, he and I are going to have our first major session tomorrow at 2, to figure out how heavy that lift's actually going to be, but we look forward to the work, don't we, Dr. Brackett?
Absolutely.
And I look forward to working with him as well. I'd like to introduce you tonight, first, Mr. Jason Jones at SHS. Jason Jones, would you come forward? Mr. Jones is going to introduce his assistant principal, and he's going to speak to you for a moment.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, board, thank you, Dr. Rollins, Dr. Cleveland. I can say it is an honor and a privilege to be selected to serve Springdale High School and the Springdale School District. It has a reputation of being a servant leader school district, doing what's best for kids, and I can connect with that, and so I appreciate the opportunity to, to serve Springdale High School. I'd also like to mention that this has been a significant transition for, for me and my family, but Dr. Rollins, Dr. Cleveland, Dr. Slocum, Dr. Smith, Mr. Pete Jinx, the assistant principals of all at Springdale High School, have made this transition over, overwhelmingly positive. I've had great support from the community, people reaching out to me, giving me best wishes and best of luck, and so I really feel very fortunate, and it's just been a series of confirmations all along the way, and for, for me and my family, we truly appreciate that, and we're ready to get started working on the work. And what you need to know is that decisions made at Springdale High School will be made in what's best for kids. I also had the privilege of introducing an assistant principal that will be joining us at Springdale High School. His name is Mr. Kevin Snavely, if you'll stand up. I can tell you, Kevin is a fantastic educator, strong leader, baseline of the strongest integrity, character, passion for kids. He's a Springdale High School alumni, he's a bulldog to the core, and I'm very, very fortunate to have him step alongside with me at Springdale High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, good job.
We will dearly miss Mr. Jinx, but we are so excited to have Mr. Jones and his team come together. Now I'd like to introduce Dr. Paul Greep. Dr. Paul Greep's been named the principal of Harbor High School to take over for Dr. Brackett, and he will introduce Mr. Gladon as well.
Dr. Rollins, members of the school board, I, I'm excited. What a privilege it is to lead Harbor High School. I appreciate Dr. Brackett and his leadership. As you know, Harbor High has been a pillar within Northwest Arkansas and the state for, really since its inception, and for the opportunity to lead Harbor, you know, as an administrator, and then I think as a dad, is just a special place in my heart. You know, when I think about the great opportunities that Harbor has on its horizons, it's exciting. Thinking about just the, the values of the Springdale School District and our mission to teach all kids, those that are high flyers and those that are struggling, to make them our highest priority to me is, is what this is all about. And then when I look at the faculty at Harbor High School and how they've embraced me already, and the great things that they're doing, it's exciting to think about what is yet to come. And so I'm certainly appreciative, Dr. Rollins and the board, for this opportunity. To think when I came to Springdale in 2005, and just the confidence that you've had in me over the years, I certainly will not let you down. So again, thank you for this opportunity, and I'm excited to work alongside Mr. Curtis Gladon. Mr. Gladon was at Central when I came there in 2014, and to be able to be reunited with him as an assistant principal at Harbor High School is special. I know that he is all in and he's all about kids, and when you have that kind of servant leadership, great things will happen. So, Mr. Gladon, we're excited to have you as part of the Wildcat family as well. Thank you.
Our third major high school, the School of Innovation, I'd like to introduce Ms. Shannon Tisher and Ms. Ann Martfeld. They've both taken new roles in SOI. They will also have an assistant principal that should be named by the end of the week, so that is coming forward. So, Ms. Shannon Tisher and Ms. Martfeld, would you come forward, please?
Thank you to Dr. Rollins and all of you on the school board. Now I get to ask Mr. Emerson a question too. So who was your favorite English teacher? If we're going to call out the favorite Spanish teacher?
Of course, you.
Thank you!
That was your first, your first year, right?
That was my very first year of teaching. Wish I could go back and do that all over again.
Full circle.
Wasn't that fun? Yes.
Full circle.
So I wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you, and also to Dr. Joe Rollins, and to Ann Martfeld, and Damon Donnell, and the amazing SOI staff. I am so honored to have been named to be the high school principal there at SOI, and I already realize that students from all walks of life choose SOI for all different reasons, and the beauty of that is that the sky's the limit for them, the world is at their fingertips, whether they want a traditional high school diploma, they want a career credential endorsement, they want to gain an associate's degree the same day they get their diploma, they want college hours. Any opportunity that they seek is there, and it's going to be our responsibility to make sure that each and every one of them are able to pursue their dreams and reach the goals that they set, and they attain what they sought when they chose to go there. And so I'm excited to be a part of the team, and I can't wait to get started. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity as well. I'd like to give a big thank you to Dr. Joe Rollins, who has guided me the entire way, and without his foundation, there's no way possible we'd have 1,268 students on the books for the fall of 2018. So I really appreciate his faith and confidence in bringing me over, as well as to Dr. Rollins and the school board, and Mr. Donnell, and now Ms. Tisher, we've just, are having tons of fun, and we're so excited about the opportunity. When we think about adding to the School of Innovation, you usually think, okay, six through 12, you're adding 12th and 6th, and I'm like, oh no, we're adding 156 graders that have never been on our campus, 102 7th graders, and 247 8th graders that have never been on our campus in the fall. So we are super excited, can't wait for that new assistant principal as well, so that will be nice for us, our journey. So I just want to thank you again, and really, the vision set forth by Dr. Joe Rollins in the beginning has been my pleasure to help him execute his dream, and then to carry the torch with Ms. Tisher. You couldn't find two more dedicated administrators, and we're going to get it done. Thank you so much.
I didn't know Joe was so great. Gosh, Joe, fantastic, way to go. No, I'm teasing. Okay. With Ms. Tisher leaving, Southwest Junior High left an opening. Dr. Rollins and the team chose Ms. Cissy Lindley. Ms. Cissy Lindley is not new to us, she's been assistant principal at Southwest for the last several years, and has done an excellent job leading instruction. Ms. Cissy, I'd like for you to come to the podium, if you do not mind, say a couple of words. With her coming to the principal position, it does leave an assistants position open that has been posted, so we have a little bit more work to do, don't we, Doc?
Yes, we do.
Thank you so much. As we probably just demonstrated, Ms. Tisher is a hard act to follow. I have been privileged to work with her and in Southwest, at Southwest for the last two years. The work is near and dear to my heart, the system she has in place are my passion, and serving students and loving students is what I wake up for to do every day, and so I can't wait to continue with the, the success that she's laid out for us. I can't wait to continue working with our staff and just keep working to make Southwest even better than what it is today. We won't stop, we won't rest until every one of our students are succeeding at their greatest potential. So thank you for the opportunity to lead that charge.
I think we can skip Todd Lofton, right? No, no, we won't skip Todd Lofton. Todd Lofton has been in our district for a long time, has served in several different schools, and served admirably in each school. Recently, he's been, I guess, at Hellstone for the last five years, is that correct? And now has been moved to Central Junior High, so we're excited to have, have Todd Lofton elevate to, to Central. Does leave quite a hole at Hellstone, but we're working on that, so we should have an opportunity for you to be introduced to a new principal, hopefully next month. Dr. Lofton?
Well, I want to begin by saying, I guess I was 2004, moved my family up here, and my son's going to be a senior next year at Harbor High School, and Springdale's home, it's a great place to serve, not only having the opportunity to have my, my own sons and daughters in class, I have a daughter that's going to be at, at Hellstone, have another daughter going to be at Central, and she's okay with it, and a son that's going to be at Harbor High School, and so it's been a privilege to serve them, but even more so just the, the students of Springdale. I'm thankful for every opportunity, Dr. Rollins and his team and board that you all have given me. I take my, my job and my responsibility to heart, I'm appreciative of the chance that I get to impact lives every day. And along with that, Dr. Greep's left a great situation. Central is on very good footing, and I'm appreciative of the work that he's done, and looking forward to where we can take that school, and particularly providing the connection for Hellstone students through Central and onto Harbor, because we have amazing students across the district. So thank you for your confidence and faith in me, and for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you, Doc.
Just a couple of orders of business. Shawna Lyons has been granted, if lack for a better word, the position as part-time grants coordinator that you've approved from Dr. Rollins, and so that leaves Archer open right now. We've posted Archer, we've done interviews, and we should have a selection, hopefully by the end of the week, this week as well, but it does leave that position open. So we've got Hellstone open, Archer open, and Hellstone also has an assistant principal. We are working on that, but we believe that it's most important for us to, to place the principal at Hellstone first, and then allow that principal to go through and try to make the selection for AP as well. So that's where we are. Finally, I have some updates for you, as far as the number of personnel that we've had retire or resign, and the ones that have been able to, to be hired. Now if you look at the numbers, you'll see 89 have resigned or retired, and I've only been able to hire 43. I'm a little slow on that, I'm trying to, trying to come forward, but Dr. Rollins has made sure that I only hire the best, and in doing that, it just takes some time, and these principal positions have been very important. Just so you know, we do have the finest people, I think God's put on earth, in one location, and that's in Springdale, Arkansas, and I'm very thankful to be here. And I'm very thankful to be here and thankful to work with you all, thankful to work with Dr. Rollins, this team and this entire staff. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. If not, I'll get out of the way.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great job, Doc. Board, we're on out of G and this play is coming forward with some very important announcements for us. Thank you, Kendra.
Good evening. I have three items for you this evening. The first one is our routine approval for out-of-district transfers. You'll see in the attachment that this month there are coming into the district, three students from Huntsville, four students from Bentonville and three students from Siloam Springs and one student is requesting to be transferred to Fayetteville from our district. That student in particular, I know you don't see a lot of students requesting to go out. She has a sibling that was transferred under school choice in a previous year and the family missed the deadline this year and so they requested a transfer this way. I'll be happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'd ask that you approve these out-of-district transfers.
I make a motion that we approve the out-of-district transfers.
Second?
I have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Hutchinson to approve the Springdale School District out-of-district transfers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. The second item is just for information purposes. May 1st was the deadline for school choice applications for students wanting those to go into effect for the 1819 school year. So, I included several spreadsheets in your materials. The first one is just the total school choice transfers. You'll see a column into the district, out of the district and where those students are coming and going from, a breakdown of our neighboring districts. Total school choice, you see 81 students requested to come into the district and 87 requested to go out. That's more than we've seen in previous years, so I pulled last year's numbers. This is just school choice only. There were 49 incoming requests last year and 61 outgoing requests. So, I don't know if people are learning more about school choice or what, but those are the school choice numbers. When I presented school choice numbers last year, some of you asked for totals for the board-to-board transfers that you see every month. So, it's not really an apples-to-apples comparison because school choice is a point in time where they do that one time per year and you know that you see the board-to-board transfers every month, but I went ahead and included the board-to-board transfers that you've done over the past year. And then also for kind of a total view, there's a total transfer. So, that's including school choice and out-of-district transfers. And you see into the district, there are 153 students and out of the district, 89. So, there's a lot of movement, but majority requesting to come in to the district.
But when you look at it, total, total, it's 64 gain coming into the district versus going out.
Yes.
Board-to-board plus school choice.
Yes, when you look at all the transfers, all the avenues for transfer. That's correct. Are there any other questions on the transfers? Okay, the last item is a packet of policy revisions. You'll remember about this time last year, we did something similar, but I think there were a lot more policies that we looked at last year. I'll highlight a few of these for you and then if you have any questions, I'll answer them. We did present these to PPC and asked for input. They shared input and approved them unanimously, but I'll go down the list on a few. DJ purchasing, that is gonna increase the amount that, the purchase amount that requires a bid to 20,000 and some change from time to time. That's in line with the legislative change that happened in 2017 and it allows the commissioner to increase that amount based on consumer price index. Mr. Hayes was in support of that and we talked to Dr. Rollins and he also agreed to that. So, that will be a change for us. On sick leave, both for certified and classified, so that's GCBDA and GDBC. We're proposing a change to how the FMLA year is calculated. Currently, our policy for both of those groups of employees says that between July and June, an employee gets 12 weeks of FMLA leave if they qualify. They've gotta meet certain criteria. What happens on occasion is that an employee would have an FMLA qualifying leave that's right at the end of that year and then they get another 12 weeks when July 1 hits, so they could be off for up to 24 consecutive weeks, which can cause a hardship for the position they're in. We have other options for extended leaves of absences if employees need them, but the proposed change is instead of having a July to June FMLA year, it would be individual, it'd be personalized to the employee where if I take FMLA beginning May 1, for example, then my FMLA year is gonna be until the following May 1. So, it's truly 12 weeks in a year rather than kind of an arbitrary calendar start over. And that's authorized, it's one of the options that the federal regulations allow us to pick and we just think it'd be a better fit.
So, it's individualized?
Yes, personalized FMLA, individualized.
Set down or they basically?
Yes, yes.
Your own ILP, Individual Learning Plan.
Exactly. Absolutely, that's what we're going for. You'll see changes to the three attendance policies, so those are the JE, JEA and JEC When we looked at those policies, they all had kind of varying reasons on what would be allowed to be an excused absence. Something that we're seeing in light of ESSA is that absences are big. And so, a group of principals sat down with me and suggested making the reasons for excused absences uniform from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So, the absence reasons that we pushed down are the ones that have been used at secondary for a long time, but now that'll just be starting at the kindergarten level as well. We know we'll have to do some parent education in this next year as it may be a little bit different than what they've dealt with before, but the state and the federal accountability plan is really highlighting student absences and this is an effort to increase the scores for those schools as best we can. JHCD administering medicines to students has two pieces. One, in February, one of the PD days, all of the nurses in the district asked me to come spend about an hour with them and just answer questions and talk about policy. And one of the suggestions they had for the policy that they use the most, which is this administering medicine to students, they were having some difficulty with parents wanting them to administer essential oils, which are quite popular now. The nurses didn't feel comfortable because they often were not on doctor's orders. Essential oils are not regulated by the FDA. So, we did put a clause in the medicine policy that our nurses and our school staff will not administer anything that's not regulated by the FDA. It also, you may remember, I think that it was two legislative sessions ago, so that would've been in 2015. There was legislation that authorized if a school board chose to allow schools to stock EpiPens. So, these would be EpiPens that are not for a particular student, but there would be a handful at each school in the event that a nurse recognizes a student having anaphylactic shock that maybe he or she never had any symptoms of before, there would be EpiPens on hand for that nurse to administer to the student. There are no side effects of administering an EpiPen, so it's a safety issue that Nurse Laundre has, I think the first day I came to work, she talked to me about working on a policy that would allow that. So, that is a major change, but I think a positive change to policy.
With that one, how will we alert parents if that is it, that we have that or that? I mean, as a parent, I would feel safer knowing that we had it, but there are other parents that do not.
Right, so...
I mean, are we alerting our parents, particularly our elementary school parents, that that is, you know, if something happened and your child, you know, had a, that this could be...
We do with all of our parents, ask them to sign or not sign. They could opt out.
Right.
That our nurse would administer or call for emergency medical treatment. So, I think this falls under that, yes, because this, you know, if a child's having anaphylactic shock, that's really an emergency, but we'll...
I 100% agree. I'm just saying we also have a subset that just does not seem, so I just wanted to cover all the bases.
Right, I'll talk with...
On how we educate our parents to, hey, this is how we're going to help your child if needed, but, you know, in an emergency situation, but just giving them that opportunity if they so chose to sign up.
To opt out. I'll talk with Ms. Laundre about plans for that.
I mean, I hate that we have to even think that.
No, I understand. Absolutely. And the last policy that I'll highlight is crowdfunding. So, crowdfunding, if you're not familiar, is Donors Choose, GoFundMe, those sort of internet-based fundraising sites that raise money from multiple individuals. We have lots and lots of teachers in the district that use that. This policy is not meant to be a hindrance to that, it's just meant to have some sort of record of who's raising money in the name of Springdale School District so that someone is not out there raising money unauthorized. I've gotten some feedback that we're gonna, it's gonna be a lot more work than we think it is to keep up with, keep up with all of the crowdfunding, but we'll at least get a start on keeping a handle on who's raising money, saying, "I'm a Springdale School District teacher, I wanna raise money for this project." So, that is a new policy that Mr. Hayes worked on, Mr. Hayes and I worked on together.
So, are we gonna leave, I mean, are the principals going to be the initial first lineup?
It'll be the principal and then it will come to the appropriate assistant superintendent, so either...
There's a lot.
I know, I know. So, this may be a good learning year in saying, this is a better way, there may be a better way to monitor this, but we at least wanna get our feet wet in knowing what crowdfunding's out there.
So, we gotta get Kelly versed up in trolling social media to find out all that.
Absolutely. Okay, those are the major changes as I see it, but I will be happy to answer any questions that you have about any of the policies.
On the crowdfunding, the principals are gonna keep track of the teachers, but they're not gonna say, well, I don't agree you should be asking for money for that. They're gonna let them do.
The idea is not approval and that some will be denied, it's more of a record.
Scan prevention.
So, they obtain prior approval?
Yes.
That's where I'm, that's...
And it does say obtain prior approval, but when we talk to principals and then when they come over here, the...
So, they do need to go through an approval process?
It is an approval process, but the conversations that we have had have not been, you're going to deny some. It's more of a registry.
No, I understand that. I just, as looking at that paragraph, though, it's talking about not only, especially if you're asking for equipment, there's going to be multiple layers of approval that you need.
Yeah, well, if it's technology, then it would have to make sure that whatever technology, equipment or software is compatible with our systems. So, that's the only extra layer.
Okay, so if we, no, I'm asking a lot of questions.
No, you're...
I just see a lot of, on social media, I mean, there are, on, coming across my Facebook page alone, there are hundreds of crowdfunding. So, I'm just questioning whether or not upon us approving that, does that mean, okay, immediately now, do these teachers and principals need to, are they going to be keeping up with it now? Are we starting it as a school year? I mean, where is the lineup? Because that's, there's already, I mean, there's a ton of people that are already, I saw one come across mine today, so where is the timeframe on that?
Right. So, all of these policies will go into effect July 1, so it'll be for the next school year or if they're doing fundraising over the summer, but it would be new. We're not gonna go back and say, you've already got something out there, we need to approve that.
Okay. I'm just concerned about getting, making sure they know. I mean, I guess it's not, I mean, December is a big open gap of, you know, I'm turning my computer off, I'm not, or I'm not, or whatever, and I just have, making sure our staff knows across the board.
Right.
I don't want anybody to, you know, upon voting on this, I don't want anybody to go, oh, well, I didn't know. I mean, so I wanna make sure that we have steps in place to alert them.
One of the things that I'm required to do is any policies that you approve today, I have to let all of our, all of our staff know that these are new policies, they're in effect July 1. I know they have to check email to do that, but we'll work to make sure they know and we'll make sure that that's part of their back-to-school...
And I know I asked a lot of questions.
No, it's new and it's, I mean, it's a new, a new area that there aren't a lot of policies out there about it. So, we really, Mr. Hayes did research and didn't really like what any other district had, so kinda crafted, crafted our own there. Are there any other questions?
Feel free to ask.
Yes, absolutely, please ask.
It's a big block here that we're obligated to share our concerns or questions. That's what we're here for.
If there aren't any questions, I do need a motion to approve the changes or to make any recommendations for changes that are not proposed that you have.
I make a motion to approve the changes to our policies as submitted here.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hutchinson, a second by Mr. Lucero to approve our policy revisions and updates to current policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Dr. Rollins?
If you recall, last board meeting, we brought to you a list of schools that had demonstrated a lot of growth and were getting awards for it, so it was almost $900,000. Remember that? Well, this month, the Office of Education Policy has announced their Outstanding Education Performance Awards and these are the awards for the schools that are in the top 20 or top 10 of their, of the state in specific areas. So, you've got that in your board materials, I believe it starts on page 105, but I would like to, we have, we have four of the top 20 elementary schools in the state for overall growth. Now, I've got, there are representatives of all of those schools here tonight and when I call that school's name, if you will please stand up, and I do want to announce that Ms. Dozier was planning to come tonight, but she's ill and is unable to do that. So, coming in at number 19 out of 20 is Sonora Elementary School. Number 15 out of 20, overall, now this is overall, this is English and math, reading, writing, all of that combined. Coming at number 15 is Burnish Young Elementary. 13 is JB Hunt Elementary. And coming in at number seven in the state, John Tyson Elementary. Third grade, put them up.
Third grade, wasn't it?
Okay, thank you. The top five elementary schools in northwest Arkansas for overall growth, we had someone who represented us in that group and that is John Tyson Elementary. Now, let's look at the top 10 schools in overall growth in mathematics. Now, this is top 10. Coming in at number five, Burnish Young Elementary. Now this is top 10. Coming in at number five, Bernish Young Elementary. And third in the state in overall mathematics growth, Monitor Elementary. And of course, obviously, those two schools also placed in the top five elementaries in mathematics growth in Northwest Arkansas, and that is number five, Bernish Young Elementary. And second, Monitor Elementary. They also announced the top 10 elementary schools in the state for English Language Arts Growth, and I think I told you, that is reading, writing, and English. And in the top 10, coming in number four, Hunt Elementary. And rather than make Ms. Athie stand again, they also came in second in Northwest Arkansas. This report was only for elementary, they will put out another report later for middle schools, junior highs, and high schools. So obviously, Dr. Smith will make that report for us at that time. Also, they haven't done this in a few years, but they're gonna also publish a beating-the-odds report on schools that have high poverty, high English learners, and how they fared in, in growing kids. So I, I expect that we will have even more schools in that group, so we are very proud of them and the work that they've done. The second item on there is something that we did on May 14. As you know, we are one of five Forward Arkansas communities in the state of Arkansas. And the week of May 14 through the 18th, each of those communities hosted at least one community-wide meeting. They called them Forward Together Conversations, and it was based on a process that they called On the Table. Well, you know how we are here in Springdale, we decided we were gonna alter that a little bit, because we thought that we had a better way of doing that. So that night, we sent out, oh, we sent out invitations to people. We asked our principals to bring parents with them, because one of the things we've been learning is that parents are more likely to come, particularly our shy parents, our parents who are learning English, are more likely to come to an event like that if they come with someone they already know and trust. So we asked our principals to do that. And they, they delivered. That night, I expected 60 to 80 parents, members of the community. We had 156 community members who came. We had students there, we had parents, we had business people, we had community people, we had advocates for children, it was a very diverse group. So the, what we did, there were four questions that we asked them, that they processed at their tail. I'll tell you about the process a little bit in a minute. One was, where do you see the district in 10 years? Another one was, what things do you see that could get in the way of, of us achieving that vision? What are things that you see that will help us get to that vision? And the last one was, how do you see yourself or other community members helping us to get to that vision? So at the tables, I trained facilitators prior to that evening, and I just sent out an I'll call to any principal, assistant principal, instructional specialist, anyone who would like to be a facilitator. Within 10 minutes, I already had 15 volunteers, they were pretty excited about it, we trained more. Just in case, we had a lot of people show up, and thank goodness we did. But at the, there was a facilitator, there was a timekeeper, there was a recorder, and here's how the process worked. We processed each question individually, and that recorder recorded each idea from the group on a sticky note, just a plain old yellow sticky note. Then, once they processed that question, the reporter, or I call them the poster, would go and post that on charts. We had each of the four questions on different charts around the room, so they posted those on the chart. And then, of course, there were the other group members. Once that had been accomplished, we told the groups, all right, Al, as a group, we want you to take additional sticky notes, and as a group, go visit each of the sets of charts. And if you have additional ideas, you see something that kind of triggers your brain, makes you think, I have another idea to add now, put it on the sticky note and put it up there. Or if you just want to give a thumbs up, or yes, great idea, I agree, that's fine. So they did that, and they were able to carousel around to all of the, the charts, and then they sat back down. One of the reasons why we did that is there are a lot of parents who are too shy to speak out across a room. And we wanted to make sure that everyone had a voice, everyone had a voice at the table, everyone had a voice and an opportunity to read what was posted on the walls. At the end, and this is one of the things that I love the most, I asked, I said, we can take about three answers, and I would like to hear, what is an idea that intrigued you the most about what you saw and read tonight? Three hands shot up very quickly. One of them said, the hands-on learning, the project-based learning, that really intrigues me. Another one said, that open mindset, that growth mindset is what is going to change us as a district. And the last one was, I believe there should be a balance between technology and textbook delivery. And one of the most phenomenal things about that was, all three of those were our students. So I, you know, if you think about what the future of Springdale and the kids that we've got coming through, I think they're gonna do great things. It was a, it was a great night, we will take the input that we received that night, and we will, as a team, as a leadership team, will process that and see, how will we use that? How can we make that, help us move forward? The way things were worded, it was worded so that we got from the parents really good information, really good feedback, as well as asking them for their help in this process.
Are you gonna try to summarize those?
Yes, I will.
Like a top three, or?
Yes, I will. And I, I can give you some of them, just some big ideas. Uh, yes, I'll be happy to do that.
You have a pretty wide population, didn't you?
Yes, we did. Yes, it was very, very diverse, very diverse.
I'm just curious, what, so this information goes to Forward Arkansas as well as ourselves, is that right? Or is this just an internal thing for us?
Oh, there will, yes, there were people, our two consultants from Forward who worked with us were there that evening, and they took notes. They have made and will make additional reports to Forward about this. It was mostly on the process that was used. That was what they, they were very interested in that process, because they'd never seen that before, and liked it, because it gave everyone a chance to talk. So, but as far as like what their recommendations are, that's for us, that's for us to use internally. They've been, they have become some of our biggest supporters. I'm sorry, Ms. Dozier.
Those were four good questions, I think everybody ought to read those questions. Where do you see the district in 10 years? What are the things that hinder our health? What can we do to help helpers in advancing the priorities? And how do you see yourself and other community members helping achieve the priorities? Those are really good questions that we, I think ought to take ourselves to look at.
It was, it was a very positive process, and as, as I walked around the room to monitor what was going on, I heard some wonderful conversations. And we had planned for interpreters ahead of time so that we made sure that if there was someone who was not a native English speaker at a table, they weren't in any way handicapped to make comments. So it was a very exciting time. Other questions? One of the things that they did ask us to do, they said, you know what, we need to be better about telling the Springdale story. And we all, we all can say that, we wanna, we'd like to shout our story from the mountaintops. So on August 20th, okay, and I'm gonna, here, I'm gonna quote Dr. Rollins, write this down. But on, on August 20th, from 5:30 to 7-ish, we are gonna have a back-to-school rally. Perhaps some of you may remember when we used to do that, but we're gonna really kind of take a little bit of a different twist to it. It really will be a rally, almost like, if you can imagine, like a pep rally, that we're going back to school. It will be on, school starts on August 13th, so the following Monday, a week later, we'll be doing this. We are working on the site, and Dr. Joe Rollins is my, my partner on this, and he and I will also be recruiting other partners, because this is way bigger than the two of us can manage all by ourselves, so we'll be working on that. We'll have our bands there, our sports teams, our cheerleaders, we'll have booths that will be able to, to show off all the things that our kids can do. We'll have food, and I know, now, Dr. Joe Rollins is really good at cookouts, so he's promising at least hot dogs, chips, and drinks. Is that right? So we hope, we'll, we'll be getting you more information as, as we get closer to that event, but it ought to be a, just a really spectacular event, and I hope all of you will be able to attend. This is not on the agenda, but the Arkansas Department of Education called us and asked if we would host a focus group sessions. And so we said, we're always happy to provide a site for you to do that, and so the Don Tyson School of Innovation on the 14th of June from 4 to 7, and I'm gonna give you a handout on that, so if you're one of those visual people. So we would invite you, they're asking, they want input on some of the information kinds of things that they have. And so we will, we promised them that we would distribute this, so.
So, so why did they do this?
Why did they do this? The only thing I can tell you is that I, I, I think they want to know there's one input from, from the state.
Okay, this, this will be done in different parts of the state?
Yes, they're doing these all over the state, and they called us to host.
There's no specific topic, it's, it's to be anything.
What I'm seeing on there, if you look at that photo where it says, why? So we're curious about our current system. My school info is being used. Your feedback is important so we can take the right steps. So that I, I will, I will tell you that we know what they've shared with us here, and the rest of it is that they'll send people here to facilitate and gather the information.
What is my school info?
It is, if you go to the Arkansas Department of Education website.
It shows where we're at and what.
And like the, the OEP awards that I announced earlier, those are all on there. All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Great job, Dr. Morley, thank you very much. Mr. Hayes?
Talk slow, Craig.
Put in your phone. Then you won't remember it.
Was he serious?
He'll be right back, but he said, we talk slow, so.
Do you want me to proceed, Dr. Morley? Okay. Board, in your, in your information this evening, we included a letter from Dr. Rollins describing the salary adjustment to the certified salary schedule for this year. As you know, it has been a tradition in Springdale schools to look at our salary schedules in the spring. We, the administration team has been studying our salary schedule, determining what, if anything, we felt like we could do for our certified staff members. Traditionally in our district, the adjustment is made at the end of the year for certified, and at the beginning of the year, the following year for classified staff members. So the last several years, we have done between $200 and $300. This year, the proposal is to raise the base of the certified salary schedule by $500. This would be paid in a separate check at the end of June, and it would be retroactive back to the first of the year, and that is for our certified staff members, and then our classified sta, that's an average increase of .86. And so what we have done for classified staff members is we have increased each step of their salary schedules by .86 percent. So bring that to you this evening. We have presented to the SCA Salary Committee, the Certified and Classified Personnel Policy Committees, and they have all approved these unanimously. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So a teacher will get a $500 bonus, for lack of a better word, at the end of this month?
Yes.
Classified, will they get a .86 percent increase over their last year's salary in a bonus check?
Well, no, no, and, and we have to be careful when we say bonus.
I know, not bonus, I.
Yeah, because a bonus is a one-time thing, salary schedule, it's on there, you know, so, so we're talking about adding to the salary schedule. So the way it would work is, teachers would receive a $500 check at the end of this month, and then going forward into next school year, if they are not at the top of their salary lane, then they would go down a step, and our steps are around $684. They vary just a dollar or two in some places, but 684, so in essence, the way you can think about it is, 500 plus the 684 is 1184, and so that would be divided over their 12 checks for the new school year. Does that help? And then classified will adjust the salary schedules beginning July 1, and if they're not topped out, they'll receive their salary step, their experience step, and then we will add this amount to their.
So they don't have anything retroactive, like?
No, from July 1 forward for the. Yes.
I'm with you.
Total cost?
Uh, the total cost for this salary increase is around $1 million. And then, of course, on top of that, we have our salary steps, our experience steps, that would be added on there as well. So I think in the letter that you have there, we're showing a total cost of 3.7 million over this year.
I'm just curious, Kelly, so the, the $500 equates to that average .86 percent, and then when you add that 684, I know that would be, the percentage there would be very, is there an average between the step and the $500? What is the average increase? Are we at about 1.7%?
Well, I think our, our average teacher salary is somewhere in the neighborhood of $58,000 to $59,000.
Okay.
So what would that be? I haven't calculated it actually, but about 2%, I guess, something like that.
Okay, and then the, the foundation aid increase that we're getting right now is somewhere around 1%, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm glad that you found a way to do this, I know that you probably begged, borrowed, and stole one to be able to do that, when we're getting a 1% increase in our revenue. I'm glad you found a way to do that. I think we all know it's important.
Well, as you all know, Dr. Rollins has, and the board, have made a commitment to our teachers, and I think this is indicative of that commitment.
No, they always look.
I don't know.
You ready for a motion, Kevin?
I am now, yes.
Are you ready for a motion, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we.
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adjust our certified and classified salary schedules as presented in this evening's agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Lucrell, and a second by Mr. Dotson to adjust our certified and classified personnel pay schedules as described. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
How do the people that receive these, how are they first informed?
Well, they're first informed, I guess, if you can see, and it's the.
You want to make sure by notes.
Mr. President, if you're ready, I believe we're at item J in the first section of the agenda. I hope you've enjoyed the meeting so far this evening, I certainly have. I'm really appreciative of the team members that you met tonight, I know you know many of them. Some are new to you.
I know you know many of them, some are new to you. The quality of our teachers, the quality of our administrators make all the difference in terms of the progress that we make, and I can tell you, I believe, as we prepare for the new school year, we very likely will have the strongest administrative team we've ever had. So, I'm really looking forward to the contributions that they will make. We made this adjustment tonight because of board member travel at a regular meeting time. As we look toward the July meeting, we've, y'all have been great to adjust this schedule for me in previous years so I could participate in the National School Administrators Conference, and I've enjoyed that and hopefully helped some with considerations regarding the public schools of the country. So, I look forward to that, and with that in mind, we will look to the Tuesday, July 17th, for our July meeting. Nick, we do try to have our school board meetings the second Tuesday of every month, but on occasion, we need to make adjustments, and y'all have been great to do that this evening, and if you would, Mr. President, I would ask that we have the July meeting on the 17th. The July meeting is also one of the three times during the year that we have our administrative work sessions, and in the material in front of you, I kind of gave you a preliminary agenda to work on, and certainly, there may be other things that you'd want to consider, but let's look at those for just a moment. I would tell you that Dr. Cleveland, Dr. Joe Rollins, et cetera, continue to do great work with our architects, our construction managers, and Phase Two of the Don Tyson School of Innovation, I think, is coming forward in a very positive way. We'll have a clarification meeting this week to kind of look at the fine details of work that went on in the prior week, but again, planning a facility of this type is quite an undertaking. And y'all know that a team of educators from, from the district traveled to the Dallas area. We looked at five auditoriums in the Dallas area to get ideas about what might be incorporated in the Fine Arts program at the Don Tyson School of Innovation, so that's a big part of our work. We started this process with a budget for Phase Two of about $35 million. The plan was to hopefully construct a facility in the neighborhood of 200,000 square feet. We're still struggling to get that amount of square footage, but I would tell you, we're in the 180, 180,000 to 200,000 square feet range as we speak today, and still working hard to get that done. I'm really excited about this facility. I think you'll love it. I think our community and certainly our students will be very proud of it. We expect to begin the dirt work on the, on the site as soon as we can get the, the design itself finalized, specs written, et cetera, so it may be September, even October, before we begin the dirt package out there, but, believe me, we're moving it forward as, as rapidly as, as we can at this point. I wanted to just list for you, as we culminate a school year in this school district, it is really quite an event. Springdale High School Senior Assembly, Harbor High School Senior Assembly, $27 million in scholarships earned by 1,350 or 60 graduates from our schools. As you know, we also had the Archer Learning Center graduation, which is probably one of our favorites of the graduation experience, great young people. We had, I believe, 113, Kevin, who graduated from Archer this year with a number graduating a semester, and then, we had about 70 or five or so participate in, in the event to culminate the school year. Other end-of-year activities that you might know about, the Parents Taking Leadership Action program is also a phenomenal experience. We're a large school district, we're a multicultural community, we're constantly bringing families here from all over the world, so, Nick, it's really important that you grow a cultural understanding of what school's all about and how kids connect with the schools, and the roles parents can play there. This group of moms and dads really do phenomenal leadership in our community, Parents Taking Leadership Action. Y'all make note of that, we'll be students about that as well. At our Family Literacy Celebration, and we had a number of board members who were there, our president spoke at that event, did a great job. We graduated 203, I believe, Hispanic moms and dads this year who've been a part of that process. I believe this is our 12th year that we've had that program, and we're on our way to adding additional family literacy programs. This year, we'll have two more next year. It's 31 schools, be a great thing when we have family literacy in every school. A program that we started last year was working with the Arkansas Coalition of Marshallese, really, again, creating opportunities for our Marshallese children who are excelling in school to be recognized, to really serve as role models for our 3,000-plus Marshallese children and other children in the district. We had a three-hour celebration this past Saturday, started at 3, it was, started at 12, it was over about 3:00, and family was there, we had about 600, 700 family members there celebrating the academic performance of these children. Y'all seen some videos that we did earlier in the year, again, bringing high-performing kids, capturing home videos, sharing that high performance with Marshallese children all over the district. These kids can excel and do well, we just try and get them connected to school and help families understand how they can be great partners with us, but the Saturday event was just outstanding, it held at Lakeside Junior High School, and I'm so appreciative of all that. So, my point is, when you're trying to bring an entire community forward, it's a culture-building process. There are hundreds, thousands, and thousands of, of pieces of work that go into that, our teachers do it every day, our principals do it every day, they connect moms and dads. And if y'all recall, with the Marshallese community this year, because really of the role that our principals played, and you heard it referenced in Dr. Morley's comments earlier, principals bringing family members, we had regular participation, 50, 60, 70 family members when we had our Marshallese Patron Show meeting. Are you with me? Y'all understand what I'm telling you? It's, it's important work, and a lot of people contribute to it over time, so just keep that in mind, if you will, from the standpoint of the effort our teams make to bring our community forward together, to really make schools the focus. I know you want to look at the instructional plan, Mr. Ombi, and as we prepare for next year, our instructional division, along with principals, teachers have been revising our existing plan, bringing forward our best thoughts in regard to the outline, the game plan for next year, and we'll go over that together so we can talk about it. You heard reference the back-to-school rally, I hope we'll be much further along with our definition by that time. You met our new administrators this evening, and we'd like for them to come and talk with you personally about their vision in terms of leading their schools in the year ahead. So, these are just some ideas. Other questions or things that y'all might want to talk about, we'd be glad to work those into the agenda. Good? Okay, we'll, we'll do that together at our July 17th board meeting. Mr. Ombi, any questions about?
No, I just want to say about the, the family literacy graduation, you know, I'll admit that I had not been to one of those, and me being in the role I am in this current position kind of forced me to go to this one, because you told me I had to say some things at, at the, at the ceremony. Couple things, seeing the, the bilingual award winners here tonight.
Yes.
Made me really appreciate, I tried to say welcome and good morning in Marshallese and Spanish, and I butchered it completely, took me a week to try to figure it out, so just look at the, the smartness of all those kids there that won those awards, but then, just the humbling experience of the parental involvement and them making the effort to show to their kids that they're trying to better themselves, to show that they're going to better what they're trying to do by helping them.
Yes, sir.
Stay in education and stay in school, and they're trying to learn the language and acclimate themselves into Springdale, into Springdale Schools. It was just really a, a humbling experience to see that, and a refreshing experience to see that, because, you know, there's a lot of noise outside in the environment today, but just seeing that right there shows that there are people that are genuinely interested in connecting with the school, making sure that kids are connected in school and the community. I thought it was fantastic.
It's a beautiful thing, isn't it?
So, sometimes when you're forced to do something, you learn, you learn a lot more than you think you're going to get out of it, so, it was, it was cool.
It was so neat, as he did his introductions, the moms and dads are so proud of it. Did you sense the rec--
Yeah, they kind of--
Did you see what they did? That was great.
And then, if you ever have to do it, there's an interpreter there, so you got to plan how you're going to speak, because you got to wait on them to interpret, so it was, it was a good experience. I appreciate the--
I did, too.
Appreciate the opportunity you gave me.
I, I just think those kind of events are so important as we grow a community together. It's, it's a beautiful thing. Thank, thank you very much. Y'all want to stretch a little bit before we conclude our agenda? Or shall we proceed?
Mr. Roll.
Your call. Ready to go? Okay. All right, Dr. Cleveland? Thank you, board.
I'll have Dr. Joe come up as well. We've provided you the newest, most up-to-date iteration of the School of Innovation Phase Two. Now, keep in mind, we, this is just the 150th, I'm guessing, iteration of the School of Innovation Phase Two. There will be more as we continue to go forward, but hopefully not too many more. We have a meeting, I guess it's tomorrow? Tomorrow, again, as fast as they seem to roll, Wednesday's coming around, we have Brad Chilko. I know all of you've met Brad, Nick, I don't know if you've met Brad yet, but he'll be at probably the next board meeting when we talk more, certainly will at the work session, okay? We'll try to blow that up for you. Let's just put it on the screen for you, if you can't see it on the piece of paper, and those of you in the audience, if you'd like to look. I want to have Joe go through with you, the main work has been done over in the school side, on what would be to your left, my left, your left, but on the right, where it says loading area and instructional technology and auditorium and gym. Joe's going to go through that with you just a little bit to tell you, to talk to you about the auditorium and how we've changed that around. Is there any ground to do that, Joe?
You bet.
All right, here's--
I'll try not to, I'll try not to labor too much on all of the spaces, we've seen some of this before, but as we talked about earlier, we had a chance to go visit some theaters that we really wanted to try and replicate. We've spent a lot of time trying to work through the performing arts side of the campus, really trying to bring a new look with some new functionality to some of our PACs, and you're going to have to bear with me, allergy season in Arkansas is fun, but a lot of attention paid to the arts. You'll start to see, we've, we've really tried to trim down some of the vocational labs. We've tried to bring those together so that we can be efficient, that construction lab will also serve as the scenery design and set shop so that it's in close proximity to the stage. The diesel lab, we understand, we've really worked with a lot of our partners, trying to make sure we have a good beat on what are the workforce needs for Northwest Arkansas, so diesel technology, industrial technology, still very much in the mix. As you get back into the main part of the building, that ag business lab that we've really tried to focus on, a key player going up and down the corridor of the building, we're starting now to work with an instructor from Brightwater, trying to build a partnership there for a culinary arts lab. You'll see some elements from Phase One that we've carried through, some of the reading portions built into the concourses of the school, the makerspace we're really excited about going into design work for tomorrow, that's going to feed into this visual arts, digital arts, multimedia, and then upstairs, which is not on screen now, is the television production and continued art space upstairs, in, continuing into more of the classroom space that we've seen in Phase One. Trying to look at some, some new options, and I do apologize about my voice, but we understand the needs of students coming through the program, and what does that look like from a college and career readiness standpoint? So, as we get into the administrative wing of the second phase, starting to really look at how can we bridge those gaps, help place students on into that college and career setting, so the definition of what is a counselor look like, that's starting to change in this model as well, and I, I know that was a big push for both Ms. Markfeldt, Mr. Donnell, our current counseling staff. How can we better meet the needs of high school students going through this model? So, you'll start to see the footprint of this building really taking strong steps into that personalized learning model. Tomorrow's going to be another big day of planning, Brad's going to be here from about 10 until we decide to close the doors tomorrow afternoon, and we're really going to try and make sure that this is a building that continues the look, the feel, and the function that we're all going to be proud of, so we're, we're very excited about where we stand today, and hopefully, we can get a lot closer tomorrow.
So, Joe, the buildings won't be connected on this side over here, is that right?
What you're seeing there, so, you'll see the corner of our current cafeteria.
Yep.
As we bridge into the next portion of the building, we had to leave some open space to get emergency vehicles, things like that, into the courtyard.
Okay, yeah, all right.
But that serves as a covered, secure, it's a nice outdoor eating kind of space for students, let them have a little bit of, little bit of air at the same time.
So, it's connected on that side, but not on this side for the--
We, we used a required element and made it something that was also functional.
Got it, okay.
Something new that we haven't, that we don't have in some of the other schools, is you'll see on the far right, you'll see a dance studio and a fitness center. We went into a performing arts center at a school in Dallas, and they had this dance studio upstairs, connected to the top of the auditorium, and we thought that was just an amazing, an amazing option for them, but the dance studio itself really is PE space, the partner, or the state partners with us roughly 50 percent for PE space, and so, we're, we're creating or meeting the need of PE space, but also providing this dance and ballet or cheer or wrestling, a lot of things could happen in there, so, we're breaking that particular space out.
Is that the, is that the gym that's currently there?
No, the gym that's currently there looks like a big white box.
That white spot, okay, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah.
So, what, what's that going to be, is that, is it still the gym, or?
Still the gym, we were required to have additional PE space.
A double gym.
For 2,000 students.
Yeah, okay.
Lots of options. Of course, we expect in, in July, when we have the, the board work session, we should have a lot more things nailed down, and of course, he'll feed you information, I'm sure, Dr. Rollins will, as, as time permits for, over the next few weeks, but right now, it's really the time that detail work has to be done, so, pretty much, this looks like where we're headed. He did talk to you about 180,000 to 200,000 square feet, we're in that range, he'd like to have all the space that we potentially, or possibly have, I've heard him say this a thousand times, but we have to make sure that we don't spend any more than 35 million.
Can I just come back and take us through the current technical piece, just for a few minutes?
Okay.
Just take us, Joe, lab by lab, let us know what the plans are.
Where do you want to start, industrial technology?
Well, yeah, let's just, let's just take that CTE center, make sure the board understands that as well.
Okay.
And, we, we kind of brushed over these as, as I was going through the building, but again, these are the result of several meetings with, with our community partners who have told us this is what the needs are, and we're trying now to go back and build labs that meet Northwest Arkansas needs. So, that construction lab, we understand that the lab that we had in Phase One was a place to get started, it wasn't a full-size construction lab, and that program was quickly growing into a larger need. So, right now, that program suits, it's an NCCER-based program, and they were working on carpentry, electrical plumbing. This lab will give them the opportunity to start to grow even more into a digital side of construction technology. Diesel technology, we all understand the argument there and why that's needed in this area. This is about a 4,000-square-foot diesel technology lab. We've been approached by some of our larger industries in the area, asking for ways to partner with our schools in terms of how can we build an interest in diesel technology in our field. I think you're going to see a lot of interest from our partners in being a part of that program. The industrial technology side, that's everything from hydraulics, pneumatics, PLCs, logic control model, logic control models, what, what you might see on the floors of several of our large industries in the area. As you look into agribusiness, we have the conversation now about how many different hands does it take to get dinner from food to table, how many different occupations are there, and that's everything from what you see in the field to what you see behind glass in the grocery store, so there are a lot of occupations there. We wanted to partner it with the culinary arts program. arts program because we have a large hospitality, human service need in the area. The Makerspace, going all the way back into the main part of the building, the Makerspace portion of the building is going to fuel back into the multimedia advertising graphic design, which is right across the hallway from those digital arts and visual arts programs.
I can listen, how are you?
Fantastic.
I'm good.
Good to see you.
Yes.
I asked, I asked Jason to come down and, and take a close look at where we are. He is in the team of solid friends and done a beautiful job bringing this career and technical piece into the hospital experience. Take a close look at that.
Yeah, I just, I can speak specifically to your industrial technology lab, the N C C R curriculum and the hydraulics, pneumatics, motor controls, P L Cs. Those are, those are, that's a happening place right now in industry. And, and anything that you can do to seize that momentum and, and seize those opportunities for kids, you're doing kids a great justice because we're not just talking about line workers, we're talking about kids getting involved on the P L C piece. It's that next level. And it's, it's a generation changer. And you should have a lot of pride with, with what you have going here. It's good stuff.
Food science, food science element in this design? Let's do that again. And how do you work with the, with the other culinary labs in the area?
Okay. So early in the design phase, we knew we wanted to have a food science program. So we, we reached out to a familiar name. We, we called Vincent Penalto from, from Brightwater. So he's their lead instructor now, and we expressed that we wanted to have a, a partnership with him. He came down, helped us work through with Brad and designed a truly, truly what we feel is going to be a state-of-the-art culinary science lab, to the point that I'm really trying to twist his arm to help us make sure that whenever that time comes, we have the, the right connections, the right instructors in place to really make that a true partnership with, with the Brightwater Academy.
And I guess just one other point. I know we've had representatives from corporate, Tyson Foods and the planning in regards to the C T E center. Talk a little bit about Mr. Rollins, his work there, his knowledge, how they are important.
And, and again, Mr. Jones is going to have a firsthand knowledge of working with Mike Rogers, his team from Tyson. They're, they were very interested in the industrial technology program. So that's where a lot of the conversation between the P L Cs, the hydraulics, the pneumatics, the systems that you're going to see from an industrial maintenance standpoint in, in our local business. So they've come to the table to the point that they want to help lay out the needs, the programs of the labs, and that helped fuel the need for this industrial technology space.
Maybe a dumb question. What does P L C stand for?
Computer Science Controls.
What's that?
Computer Science, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Is computer science an industrial program?
We say P L C and instructional setting a different way.
I know, I'm, I'm used to hearing P L C from a different thing, and you kind of keep saying it. I'm like, what the heck is P L C? So-
Little, little servo motors, the project control motors.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Now, Megan, come down.
Your son.
True.
Okay. Mr. Dodson, great question. I, I think it needs to stay in front of us every day. If you recall, prior work sessions, you wanted to say, what's innovative about this new approach? Let's talk about those innovative elements in this space too. Dr. Cleveland, once you start, then Megan and Joe, y'all conclude.
Okay. Well, to me, as we know, innovation comes in really the delivery, right? Not, not really the building, but if the building can, can enhance the delivery, then we really have a home run. What's innovative about, to me, the gym area, auditorium and all is we're using spaces in a different way. It's not just the basketball team uses the gym or the volleyball team uses the gym. We're going to have all students use the gym in a different way. Okay? We'll have a, a dance studio and a fitness area that is unlike our other schools and really unlike any traditional school. But the main thing that happens at the School of Innovation, in my view, and the, and these folks back here can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I'm wrong, is the speed to which a student can gain their education, can enhance, can go forward, is what Dr. Rollins likes to call the competencies. So if they, if they're able to prove their competency in a particular area, they can go forward faster and try to meet their, their heart goal of where they want to be later. It's kind of like your son wanted to be in the military. What'd he do? Everything he did, he marched forward to be in the military. You can do that with all of these different areas. And at the end of the day, not only do you have the potential of having your, your associate's degree, but you can have all kinds of different certificates that you can earn a living with right then if necessary. Or like, if I would have to go over and do it again to go to college, then I could work, go to college, and not have to come out with debt and a degree. So to me, that's pretty innovative.
I think innovative is a term we love to overuse. It's really about what is the, what's the output for the student? What's the, what's the end result? And one of the things that we're going to be designing in the school that doesn't exist is this idea of digital literacy. And so we are working on a proposal right now in partnership with some other, uh, community partners that could help bring this forward, which would give us something that doesn't exist, not just in Springdale, but it doesn't exist here in Arkansas. Our closest spot that we found, it's really big and happening in, in Tokyo and some other parts of the country. And so we're trying to bring forward a model that would help kids take an idea of I think I want to do this, or I'm good at that, and actually bringing it to culmination, to that entrepreneurial spirit part that we're trying to kind of capture and reach for, for students, which is amazing.
So if I'm a general contractor, I'm not going to ask you this question.
Good, thank you, Seth.
So if I'm a general contractor in Northwest Arkansas, and I'm building multi-unit housing, how can the School of Innovation benefit me as a general contractor, who's responsible for all the subs for that project?
How would, how would it benefit the student or?
How would it benefit me as the general contractor in what's going to come out of the School of Innovation? Or can I partner with the School of Innovation as well as the general contractor?
The short answer is, we'd love to have you partner with the School of Innovation, but after that, the kids, let, let's take the, the construction program, for instance.
Do the houses example from, from that we saw in Kent.
Got it, got it. Number one, it's the experience that they're getting. Number two, it's the credentials that they're bearing when they come out. So kids have the opportunity to come to you. They would have their OSHA under their belt already. Then that stackable credential starts to come in between either carpentry, electrical, plumbing, these steps keep on going. So the benefit to you is they're not starting at square one. They're starting at square three or four. They are now in a potential to be where they could walk into a, a true apprentice program ahead of the game. But to kind of put a bow on what we've talked about, in my opinion, what makes it so innovative is that personalized option that students can pick and choose from this menu of offerings. When you came for the board, or the board luncheon, you sat down, you planned out, these are the steps that I want to take to get the goals that I'm after. That's the work that's going on there every day right now. So they'll have twelve hundred and how many of those meetings next year?
Five hundred.
Twelve, twelve hundred and a whole lot of meetings.
Well, I've, I've, I've had that conversation, or that question presented to me over the course of the last couple of months from some actual contractors, asking, you know, how can we, what do we need to do to help us so we can get good qualified, trained starters out there that can go into, into be master electricians or journeyman plumbers or, you know, specialized pneumatics or whatever?
Right.
Because there is a need, and that, I mean, that's what we're talking about, fitting that, filling that need als, from, from an education standpoint, but also for the business community.
You know, I can make a blanket statement now about any of our career programs. Those programs are as strong as the partnerships and the feedback that they get. You know, we've had this conversation before, the needs outside of our walls are changing real quick. We can only stay current with what we know. So if they want to come partner with us, that strengthens every one of these programs.
And unfortunately, Kevin, Kevin, somebody will ask you that question five years from-
I don't know.
And, and you say?
I mean, I, I remember just being responsible for Berry Street and Round the Road, and we were looking for good quality refrigeration mechanics and-
I bet they are today, too.
Still, yeah. So, I mean, that need diesel mechanics, and go to Round the Road over there where they service the trucks over there for Tyson and George's Truck Shop and Simmons down the road.
Okay, but if, if they're coming to you and you're looking for somebody to help get them plugged in, I'll, I'll take that and run with it. I'll be glad to make connections with any of these folks back here because they all want those partnerships.
That's more general comments and not really-
That's okay.
My comment about here for five years is not that we won't be doing it, but five years ago, we were doing it, but somebody earlier said, telling our story. We hear that time and time again. How do we tell our story? And man, we're trying to make the kids to tell the story because, because we're doing the work that helps. And one of the things that you mentioned that just speaks up for the kids, and, uh, in my mind, this is one of the first times, not one of the first times, but our school district will not be slowing down the bright kids that can go as fast as they want. We won't be slowing them down. Say, go get it, because there will be the things that they need, and that is really exciting.
If, if we have partners that want to come partner with our programs, let's take it one by one. Maybe the more that we get plugged in, the more they'll bring their, their colleagues with them.
Yeah.
But somehow and all that, we started out talking about the facility. I hope we got there.
I'll, I'll thank you for giving a good overview, and we'll come back in July and take a closer look. I'd like each of you to, your contributions.
Yeah, good job.
Other comments or questions?
Jared, thank you very much.
Thank you, man.
Got it, Hayes. Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Cleveland, before, before we get too far, are there other comments you want to make on any of the other construction projects, or are we in good shape on those?
We, we pretty much have everything complete. We're doing some summer projects. We've started on phase one, bidding some parts out over at the central parking that Dr. Rollins has approved. So we're going to try to work on that as quickly as we can.
Where's that going to be?
Do you know where the practice field is? From the practice field over to the building where the bus lane is, we're going to try to skin that dirt, gravel it, and put some paving there to try to create a new parking area. And then over time, we're going to try to reroute the buses and where the, the patrons park for games, things, really in the falls where it's the most problematic, when we have volleyball and football going at the same time. So we're trying to create a situation where the buses can get out one way, parents are one way, and the staff is parked in another area, and they're not all intertwined. It's just a, it's a real nightmare if you have to be in it.
I'm not in the middle of the road.
When, when you're not in it, you think, oh, well, it's probably not too big of a deal. But when you're in it, you can get some road rage.
I've, I've heard some, some comments on multiple occasions about it, so.
I've been good lately.
You've been fantastic. No road rage.
No, I just got them out in the middle of the road and started directing traffic.
Well, what's really helped is Alan Athie and Jeremy Quaid, they've worked with the city to move that crosswalk.
That's been a huge help.
It's, it's a start, and so we're working on trying to improve it every day.
Jared, what about the baseball and softball over here at Springdale? It seems like it's kind of stopped.
Well, everything has stopped as far as the work that was required. Now it's our turn to try to get lights, concession stand, dugouts, all those kinds of things.
Partners. Meet some partners.
Oh, for sure. I mean, the lights-
So the fencing and all, all that's done, the?
It's, it's done. We did, we tried to be really smart and lay all the conduits and things like that early. We also did the irrigation early. So it's all there. Now our, our work is to try to come up with the funds to finish it. While we're doing that, we're also working on finishing Harber's. Harber has a great baseball field, and it's got a start of a softball field, nowhere close to playable. So we don't want to do one without doing the other. So right now, we're trying to look at it as one large project. If we bid the lights together, we get a better price. If we bid the work on building the, the dugouts, we get a better price. But if you did them individually, as you know, it goes up.
The track looks great. The track looks-
The track is, the track is as good as any track in this state.
They mowed it earlier this week and it really looks good. It's looking kind of rough there, but then they mowed it and it's-
Well, they're trying to get the grass to seed, and yeah.
I know, I know.
So I think the kids enjoy it.
That was good.
The libraries are moving in, so everything looks pretty good. We have a lot of summer projects. So if you see our trucks going and they're moving, they are. We are burning up the road, trying to get from school to school to clean everything up. A lot of summer projects, and we're, we're going well. Anything else?
I just, I was at Tyson this past week. That new entrance just gives a whole new persona to the building as well. So those, those two additions really have improved that school.
Several months ago, Dr. Rollins gave me the directive. He said, try to figure out something you can do to Walker to make it look as new as Tyson. So we're working on that on the front. So we're, we're working. We'll see if that works or not.
I'm really, really proud of what we've done with our older schools as we're trying to-
I think that's important.
Kind of rejuvenate.
Some of the older schools are as efficient, if not more efficient, than the newer ones because of the work that we've done.
Well, I see Alan back there. You guys, I think, thank our maintenance teams for all the work they do. Good job, y'all.
That's all I-
Thank you, Doc.
Okay, Kelly.
Well, I noticed when I was sitting over there looking over my notes, I made a mistake on this month.
No.
Yeah, I know it. On this building projects update, it's dated April thirtieth, and it wasn't. It's through May thirty-first, so there you go. The numbers are right, the data's wrong. On the building projects update, this is the last time you will see Tyson Media and Walker Media because those jobs have been completed and we have paid out all the funds owed on it. And so you'll see that there's a slight residual on both of those, which just means that that money is staying with us in the building fund rather than being paid out. S H S Athletics, as they just talked about, is close to being finished, financially speaking, but we still do have a payout left to go on it. I'm not exactly sure if we'll end up in the same way that we did on the medias or not. So stay tuned. Any questions on these projects? All right. If there are no questions on that, we'll move on to the monthly financials for the month of May. As I've spoken to you about for the last couple of months, I believe, our balances right now are high because we receive our tax collections two ti, two times basically during the year, in late spring, and then, of course, when they're due around October, November. The reason we receive such a large payout in the spring is because those, those individuals who have their property taxes escrowed in their monthly payment, once the bills go out, those escrow companies have so long to submit their payment. I think it's sixty days or something like that. So if you'll look on the revenue page, you'll see that this month in property taxes, we received eighteen million dollars, which is huge. It typically for the month of May is quite a bit smaller than that, but when they sent us our first check for the month, it was about a million less than we got last year in May. So I called and said, hey, what's up? You know, because where's my money, you know, our, our money? So they said that one of the escrow companies had got the money to them late, but they had a significant amount of money there for us. And so I said, well, is there any way we can have a second May settlement? And so they said, sure. So the collector worked with us and got us another May settlement. So that means our June settlement's going to be lower, but that's okay. So when you look at our revenue report, you'll see that we're over ninety-four percent collected to date on our revenues as compared to little, around eighty-nine percent last year. And that's the reason, is because we got that, a lot of our property taxes this month in May that we didn't get until June last year. So it's still looking really good. If I could call your attention to the expenditure report, you can see overall, we're slightly ahead in Funds One, Two, and Four as compared to this time last year. We were at seventy-five, twenty-five percent last year. This year, we're at seventy-six, eighty-four. That's primarily due to the numbers right ahead of that, the debt service fund. If you'll recall, last year, we did not pay out nearly what I, what we had budgeted for our debt service payment because we refunded those payments, we refunded that debt, and so we had bonded debt savings. And so that's, that's what's making this look a little off. Last year, we had only spent half of our, of what we had budgeted for debt service, but of course, this year, we've paid out all of it, just like normal. Anyway, I could continue to rattle on, but do you have any questions about, for me about the financials for this month? Just as a reminder, we have heavy payouts in the month of June because our, most of our employees are paid in twelve installments. Those that work just the school year, their first check is in September, and then they get what we call a three-in-one in June. And so- so, we'll be having heavy payouts, and, and you'll start seeing the expenditures catch up to our revenue on next month's report.
I'm just kinda curious, as you look at the revenue report and you project out June of 2018, do you expect you'll be above what you budgeted in revenues, you think?
Um, I, I, well, yes, because, uh, we don't budget for student growth, and so, that always pushes us over. And then, the other thing, as, as was alluded to earlier in the meeting, on that line about halfway down, other grants and aid state, you'll see this month, we received almost $900,000. That was that rewards and recognition money. We don't budget for that because we, you know, don't know who and who will qualify. So, obviously, that makes a big difference as well.
Yeah. Will you get any more student growth funding in June?
No, that, that's our student growth funding for the year. Represents around 270 students is, is about what it'll end up being.
Well, you're guaranteed, you know what your state foundation funding's gonna be. That's gonna be the same in June as it was May. So, you can add that in. So, it would appear that, you know, we'll end up in a good, good spot.
101, something like that.
Yeah. Great.
Any other questions for me?
Will we accept the financials that was in it?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dotson, a second by Mr. Dotson, approve the monthly financials made. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you very much.
Is Cory with you, Chris, or?
Yes, sir.
She's not here. This is, this is Chris Pearson, as you know, our, our Institute Education Association. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Right before the meeting, Cory went to the doctor and got diagnosed with strep throat.
Oh, my gosh.
So, rather than come share it with you, she went home.
You don't sound so hot yourself.
But, I'm not contagious.
Okay, that's good.
I looked up the fancy words the doctor told me, and it said 100-day cough, and I'm on day nine. So, I'm excited.
Day nine?
I'm sorry.
Day nine?
Nine, yeah, of a hundred. Uh, so, I've saved my voice as much as I could for you today, and the first thing I wanna say is first welcome, Mr. Emerson. And, and Cory sent me her request to congratulate you and welcome you as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Rollins, thank you for the opportunity to come tonight before you and the board. I just finished up my fourth year in this role with AEA back in April. I'd like to come talk to you in April, but I couldn't. And I have always appreciated the working relationship that this board has with SEA and AEA. Advocacy is the biggest part of my job. The advocacy, advocacy goes beyond the classroom and the teachers, to the custodians who, who maintain our beautiful facilities, your, I say car, your beautiful facilities. I feel like you're my family, to the bus drivers who transport the precious children. Cory and I have worked many hours this year to ensure that all groups of educators, educators being kitchen, custodian, doesn't matter, everybody's an educator. We want them to feel valued by the SEA. This year, we've had tremendous outreach with the custodians and the bus drivers. Cory and I worked closely with Jeremy White and Wayne Buttram to help bring about positive changes for both the employees and the district. And we look forward to seeing those changes in the next year. With a district this size, my work would be far more overwhelming without the continued collaboration and support of people like Jeremy White, Kevin Conkin, who I've really enjoyed this year, Mr. Samples, who we all enjoy, and countless others. I continue to roll heavily on Ms. Clay, Mrs. Clay. As a matter of fact, she supplied me with Jolly Ranchers tonight so that I could continue to speak. So, thank you. We spend a lot of time working on ideas for policies and ways to continue to enhance the working environment of our teachers, because when you do that, then the students' learning environment is also improved. I can say with all my heart to you tonight that any time that I meet with anyone regarding questions, concerns, or problems with those involved, always have the students' well-being at the forefront. As long as I am in this role, students will always come first with regard to my job in this district. Now, I'm gonna get on my soapbox just for a minute, and if you've ever heard me get on my soapbox, you know what I'm about to do. The advocacy can not stop within the buildings and the walls of this district. We all have to work together, Dr. Rollins and board, with the PTA, with SEA. We must all take an active role in the education of others with regard to what it means for public schools to face yet another controversial legislative session. We have to start that now. We must all take an active role in educating people of the importance of their vote come this November. We must all educate the others of importance of reaching out to legislators on a regular basis. It cannot simply be Dr. Rollins or you. It has to be everyone. Finally, we must take a role in educating everyone about the proposed legislation, not just giving numbers, not just saying what, what could happen badly. What is it? What's its intent? And most importantly, what's the impact to our students and their futures? If we do not do this now, when are we going to do it? And if it's not gonna be you and us and everybody that's involved, then who is going to do it? I will go anywhere, speak to anyone, and spend all the time necessary to fulfill these tasks. Thank you for your time. Another great year, and I look forward to our work together.
Thank you.